Welcome everybody here tonight to Milton City Hall. Tonight's our April eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen work session. And work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on any of the session items. We've got three items on our agenda. Public comment is allowed. It is germane to agenda items. So if you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into our city clerk or Stacy right here, one of the yellow cards. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item and once that item is called, no more cards will be accepted. So, tonight to your pleased and in recognition of Patriot's Day, if you guys could please rise for the pledge allegiance led by our Sons of the American Revolution.
Okay. Ready, hold. To the right, face. And salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. To the left face. To the front, left. To the left face. Dismissed.
Thank you very much. This is always an honor. So, Sudi, if you would please call our first item.
I don't really have to do this. The first item, we also do have a public comment, just a general public comment.
The general public comment, okay. I'll be glad to hear a general public comment.
Jack Linden?
Good evening. My name is Jack Linden. Live in fourteen eight ten East Club Road in Milton, Georgia. I wanted to make a quick comment about one of the new subdivisions that's going in that you probably have all seen. It's over on Bethany Bend across from the Cambridge High School. That subdivision, I think, is twenty-seven, twenty-eight homes on a fairly small piece of property. I was watching them clear the land for that and I was pleased initially to see a couple of very large trees that were written along Bethany Bend, including a huge oak tree that since learned it was thirty-seven inch diameter oak tree. Then they drove by the next day and all the trees were gone, including the three large trees written along the road. I found out that the total number of trees, specimen trees that were removed from that property are four large trees from the side of the street opposite the high school and an initial six very large trees on the same side as the high school, just beside where the tennis courts are, where they're putting in a sewer line. I found out that the total compensation for those trees is in the order of a hundred thousand dollars that they will be recompensing the city for, to use for installing new trees somewhere in the city. I just, I was really disappointed to see this happen and I was not be thinking that perhaps one thing you might want to do, since we're doing all this work now in conservation, we've done, we've got the green space model coming up, we've got, we've, the planning commission and you folks as well have been looking at ways to improve view sheds and other aspects of the rural nature of the city. I think that the tree ordinance needs some serious work. The, I spent a lot of time looking at the tree ordinance back last year when we were first working on the conservation subdivision plan. And I was puzzled because it really seemed to be in pretty bad shape. I was particularly looking for the definition of a buffer zone, undisturbed buffer. There were at least four different definitions within that same ordinance. I think that needs some work and what I would suggest is that when we work on that, we stop allowing clear cutting along with these subdivisions. Anybody you talk to in the city, anybody I've talked to in the city, whether they're for conservation subdivisions or not, funds or not, whatever, everybody agrees they hate to see when the developers go in and completely denude an area that's going to be built. And it seems to me if they can spend a hundred thousand dollars plus to the city for new trees to be put up in place of ones they've cut down, they could figure out a way to reconfigure the land, reconfigure the lots, maybe make a couple of the houses smaller and keep some of those really massive trees that we saw. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment, Sudi? Steve, I would like to ask this and, you know, separate this from public comment, but maybe you could have our arborist look at that development and what was approved and with the trees and just give us a recap on what, if something happened that wasn't supposed to happen or if that was the approval.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, Stacy, if you'll call the first item.
First item is proclamation recognizing Patriot's Day. What's my name?
Thank you, Stacy. By the rude bridge that arched the spring flood, their flag to April's breeze unfurled. Here once the embattled farmer stood and fired the shot heard round the world. It's no secret as we, as this nation gets older, our category of history increases. And I'm very concerned about the training or the educational system that we have and how it has minimized our history in this country. And to that point in the poem that I just recited here, I kind of wonder if kids coming out of school today have ever heard about it or understand the significance of that event that happened two hundred and thirty-five years ago. There's two, there's several organizations here in the United States that, whose mission it is to promote historical education and patriotism. And tonight we're honored to have represented two of those organizations here with us. And the point of this proclamation is to point out the historic significance of the event that happened when our revolution first started. Introduce the different organizations that are here and after we read the proclamation, as custom here, we'll all come down and distribute these proclamations and have a photo op. From the Chesta T. River chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, led by Regent Joyce Mortison, Nancy Timms, Julie Huttick, Monty Johnson, Will Timms, Jennifer Smith, and Sarah Bostic. From the Martha Stewart Bullock chapter, Kate, right? New Regent, Catherine Jimenez. Mary Simons, Paula Nelson, who was former Regent, is not with us tonight. We're honored also tonight to have the newest DAR chapter in the area and they're based in Elfruta, Georgia, Patriots of Liberty chapter, led by Regent Anell Jones, along with Susan Roper Yodell, Sue Duncan, Elizabeth Kate Orr Messer, Linda Nelson Bush, Kimberly Maine Cooper, Pauline Kerr McKinney, Rebecca Yatsenko Westbrook, Susan Lyon Yatsenko, Elizabeth Anell Jones, Linda Silverthorne, and Virginia Cochran. I noticed on the list here it didn't have Linda Reese. Hey Linda, welcome.
One more. Can you forget one?
Yeah.
One more right here.
I did the Chesta T. and Martha Stewart Bullock. And the Piedmont chapter, Sons of the American Revolution.
We said one lady.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Yeah, we missed one lady.
I'm sorry. Can't hear you.
Priscilla Lemming.
Priscilla Lemming, and welcome, Priscilla.
Sorry about that.
From the Piedmont chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, Rick Reese, who is president this year, Paul Prescott, George Thurman, Bob Sapp, and in the interest of full disclosure, myself, who is past president. From the Robert Forsyth chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, President Alan Greenlee, Ed Regal Jr., Charles Migger, Tom Davis, and Christopher Russo. Welcome all. Patriot's Day, whereas April twelfth, seventeen seventy-five is a momentous date in the founding of our nation, once celebrated with other patriotic holidays, and whereas in the early hours of that day, Paul Revere, William Dawes, and Dr. Samuel Prescott raced through the Massachusetts countryside to warn fellow citizens that British troops were coming to arrest their leaders and seize their stores of munitions. And whereas answering this alarm, patriots took up arms, congregated on the Village Green in Lexington, and during a confrontation with the British troops, several patriots were killed, thus marking the beginning of the war for American independence. And whereas on that same day, determined patriots lay in wait for the advancing British at Concord's North Bridge. And during the intense fighting, they repulsed the British, who then began their retreat to Boston with the patriots harassing them all the way. And whereas news of the shot heard round the world galvanized public opinion in favor of the American Revolution, including reluctant Georgians. Whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the importance of this day in our history and remember the sacrifices endured by many patriots during years of struggle for American independence. And whereas Milton County honored John Milton, a Georgia Continental Officer, whom the British captured at Fort MacIntosh in seventeen seventy-seven and imprisoned at St. Augustine. During the British capture of Savannah in seventeen seventy-eight, Milton saved Georgia's public records by taking them to the Carolinas and later to Maryland. It returned the records following the re-establishment of Georgia's government in seventeen eighty-two. Milton County became part of Fulton County in nineteen thirty-one. And whereas the City of Milton is named for John Milton and is within the county once named for him, now therefore the City of Milton proclaims the eighteenth day of April as Patriot's Day and encourages our citizens to honor the many patriots for whom Georgia counties and towns are named and pay tribute to all the patriots of the American Revolution, given under its hand and seal of the City of Georgia on this eighteenth day of April near two thousand and sixteen. You would all come down and if everybody would come forward, we'll present these.
[inaudible]
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 Thank you.
Again, I just, I want to thank the Sons and the Daughters of the American Revolution for being here. It's an honor to be able to present the proclamation, so thank you very much.
Just giving you a hard time, Ken.
All right, Stacy, if you want to call the next item.
Sure. The next item is a discussion of Parks and Recreation Policies, Jim Craig.
Okay. Jim? Jim Craig? Jim? Yeah.
Thank you for having me. We were talking about this. I don't really have one large presentation. It's actually a series of small presentations, if you will, we'd like to get some feedback and comment on. A year ago, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board went through a significant structural. We had three new members. We had changed the leadership. Mark Reed left and Scott Stahuski, he's still here, was elected chairman, Dave Shaven was the vice chair. And they've been at the ground rules level, doing a lot of hard work, had a lot of issues. And some of them, we have gone back as much as six months repeatedly, taking time to patiently go through issues. So what I'd like to do is take you to some of the things that we wanted to talk about and get your feedback on, please. All right, first, as you go into Bell Memorial Park, there are two walls inside, stone, stone stacked walls with metal plates on them. And we had always had a vision of making some type of wall of fame, but we've left it up to the Parks and Rec Board, to Parks and Recreation Board, to give us some formal feedback. What do we want to make this look like? And we put a lot of hard work into this and we came up with essentially two uses of the walls. The one on the right, we envisioned being a champions' wall, in which the league, Recreation League champions from previous season would come up with some type of plaque or adornment to honor their effort. The intention being that this would stay up for a year or till the next recreation season has completed. We didn't envision this as a permanent structure, a permanent measure of honor in someone. In other cities where they've done this, they very quickly run out of room on their wall. So we see this as a temporary, constantly changing, these are the champions from the most recent season. On the left wall, though, we envisioned something much more permanent, a true wall of fame, dedicated for any Milton athlete, that's city, not Milton High School, okay, Milton, any Milton athlete, who achieves athletic success beyond the high school level. Also included any coach, volunteer administrator, whose efforts and actions are deemed deserving. And then we also left an opportunity for someone or some entity that might not fit either of those categories, but in review is deemed worthy of being listed on a permanent wall of fame. The idea is that we would promote this to all of our programs, encourage people to make submissions. The submissions would be submitted to the Parks and Recreation Board with a majority vote making the determination that a person or group or entity is worthy of permanent admission to the wall of fame. Before I move on to the next one, that's kind of the end of that first presentation. So if there's any feedback, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, feedback or questions. Rick?
Just a question, Jim, on any Milton athlete who achieves athletic success behind the high school level. So, just so we're clear, are you looking at people who actually grew up here or could, because we sometimes have professional athletes and people that move in here that weren't, didn't come up through Milton, so I guess the question, have you looked at, have you considered vetting that too?
I think, I believe the intention of the, what the Parks and Rec Board is looking for is that we're talking about someone that has come up through the programs here.
Okay.
And we certainly have some well-established former pro-athletes that we could fill that wall immediately if we did it that way. But I think even these men and women who have achieved that successful degree, that this is really geared towards those who are kids who have come up and grown up through our programs.
Okay. And that's what I was hoping you'd say, is I mean, I agree on that side, I think that's the way to look at it.
So, that would be a permanent display then?
The wall of fame would be permanent. The champions' wall would be, you know, seasonal or annual.
Is there going to be, is this going to be as they are presented to us or are we going to accept maybe two applications a year and vote on them or, you know, kind of like what the NFL does? Obviously been there where they have, you know, five to fifteen that they look at and every year annually, I don't assume.
We haven't contemplated that. We really don't know what type of response we're going to get from the community when, if, this group, if and when we announce this. Hopefully there would be quite a few initially and we could evolve it to an annual or semi-annual type event. But I certainly would hope at the start, we could at least get an initial class of people that would get up there so it's not like a wall.
My thought on that, and just because I'm going through this personally with my own family and my father in the NFL Hall of Fame, the, if you have a voting process by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to make selections, I think that's good, but I think that there should be a, maybe a limit to the number of selections every year. And then, you know, if they didn't make it that year, then they could be applied for the next year and then the next year, something like that. But that does make it pretty special for the athletes or the coaches or whomever that get that recognition on a per-year basis. But it also then too, you know, it puts it on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to make good decisions about who they think should get in. Just a thought.
Yeah, great input. It actually was one of the discussion topics of, you know, do we want to limit it to five a year, eight a year, three a year?
Right.
I think what we really want to do is, you know, that's a detail that we could work out if we've got the buy-in that we're on the right track of what we want to do with these walls.
Yeah.
But I can certainly understand that and if you want to make this prestigious, you limit it both in terms of number of participants, you should, the number of inductees, as well as the number of kinds of year you consider this.
Well, I can see it being an annual thing of any sport. I think it'd be great having a ceremony for those that are inducted, because that'd be something special and permanent. It'd be an excellent thing and a great honor for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to help make those determinations. But the number of selections, I think we should be consistent on. What that number is, you guys can argue and decide, but I think the criteria should be pretty strong, but I do think it should be limited and then maybe an annual, one-time-a-year event.
My thoughts. Based on my recollection of where the Parks and Rec Board is going, I don't see any problem with that.
I would, you know, I certainly would agree. I guess the only difference it would have fluctuate would be when you mentioned the number of athletes, because maybe if you're mentioned to it once each year or whatever, but, you know, you may have, as long as your criteria is firm, you may have, you know, a couple of guys this year and five guys the next year, so.
If you have a maximum number, you can always accept less if you think. Doesn't mean you, just because maybe if you have, because we have so many sports, you might have ten positions for men's and women's in all sports, but if you have people that are applied, but they aren't worthy of the vote by the Parks and Rec, you might only accept five as an ideal. So that really is their determination to make that, make that call.
Chair.
Now, is this a situation where the Parks and Rec Advisory Board would actually be making a recommendation to the city council and we would have the ultimate approval of it, or would they be actually making the ultimate decision? Because I didn't know if the advisory board can make that kind of ultimate decision on a permanent wall, or if they would make a recommendation to us and we would actually vote on it and then, I mean, based on, I'm sure we take up whatever their recommendation is, but I just didn't know whether or not, if it's a permanent wall, if it was.
Well, that's something that we certainly were looking for some feedback on. Is this something that we want to empower the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to run with this particular, or is this something that you would want coming back to you for a final selection?
You know, that, it's kind of up to the council. I think it, you know, it I think it, you know, it could certainly be a formality, you know, as Karen said. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, I'm sure the council would agree with the Parks and Rec Board that, you know, if it's gonna be permanent, you may want to just present it to the council and let them vote on it, but I'm open to however.
It just seems like it would almost carry more weight if it was an actually city voted-on action, that we accepted these people for the wall. Like, yeah, I can't imagine us not accepting somebody that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board recommended to us.
It may give us...
If they're an advisory board, we either gotta change what they do, so that they're, if they're actually making decisions on things like them, they're not just an advisory board, they're actually a decision-making body. So I guess we need to...
We could always formalize it, and that also could make it more of a big deal for the actual athletes. We could have, you know, in the city council meeting where we go on out, we could, you know, recognize them.
We don't bring athletes here and then vote no. All right, anything else on that? Thank you for the input.
Okay.
Vaping and tobacco use in the park. We already have in our bits, and it's written here exactly as it's written in the orders of child inhalation to smoke in the park. So we've already had some situations with people who are using tobacco in other ways, as well, chewing, right? As well as, we have people who are vaping. And in many communities, vaping is kind of considered as a tobacco-type use, but then there are people who argue that there's no tobacco in, but it still presents the image of smoking, the large smoke, and I think, as the Parks and Rec Advisory Board feels very strongly, that this should not be allowed, and it gives the wrong message to the children, and as well as the usage of other types of tobacco products. So we may have made the recommendation that I approach council to request an ordinance to change this particular ordinance to include all forms of tobacco, as well as vaping.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
I agree.
It all makes sense. I just have a question. Obviously, smoking, you don't necessarily see anybody smoking, but as far as oral chewing and dipping, is that a problem now and in the past, or is that something that...
Well, when they spit on the concrete, yeah.
No, no, I understand it would be a problem. Is, are people doing that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Especially baseball players.
Yeah, I guess a side con...
Go ahead, Rick.
A side comment, what I've heard, too, just working with youth, is putting chew, or I forget what you call it, little packets that you put in your thing.
I don't use...
It's becoming a bigger issue with even kids in high school, you know, ballplayers or whatever, so I think doing, even though it's illegal if they're under 18, it still goes on, it's almost associated with a lot of baseball. So I think, I think making the statement, here's what we want, to set for an example, I guess I would be all for that, I think it, because again, you're talking about youth at a young level, so I think it sends a good message.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
I'm good with that, just my question is, how is that enforced? Would we, do we have enough personnel to enforce that? I mean...
Well, you know, when the city manager, chief Steve Krokoff, as advisor, you know, pick the battles carefully. If, you know, we try to encourage all of the community leaders, you know, Parks and Recreation Board isn't there, Tom and I isn't there, our organizations that we use, Optech and Triscape's in there, as well as our partners, Milk Steelers, Hopeful Baseball, Eagle Stakes, Georgia Rec, to get the message to all the coaches, and get to pass the word out that this is not okay. And I certainly don't envision us bringing in fleets of police to, you know, arrest people for smoking in the park, but if we put the message out there, and it's a subtle enforcement, I think we can be most successful.
Okay, Rick.
So the, what you envision is really a sign, like where you have no smoking, or you would explain, you would just kind of put it out in professional language, but something that would kind of be a signal when you come into the park, these are the rules of the park, including whatever.
Actually, we have two kiosks, as you walk past the entry walls of the park, there're two kiosks. One of them is a pictorial department, you are here, the other side is all the city ordinances. And so we would simply update that sign.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Thank you.
All right.
Screwing the fields. We wanted to talk to you folks about this because of the potential of a little bit of pushback that you might perceive. We are at the point now, we offer professional services that prepare fields. The artificial turf fields, it's not quite the same issue as is the baseball fields. The artificial turf fields, we are sweeping them once a week, we are checking them for debris, cleaning them off large debris every single day. The baseball fields require daily maintenance in terms of being dragged, and when there's games going on, where there's winding of fields, there's costs associated with that. We are, we think it's best if a field has been prepared for activities that evening or the next morning. We want to close the fields, put up signs as the fields close, if it's necessary. If it becomes problematic, we'll put locks on, prevent people from going down the fields. We're trying to prevent the situations where people are, we prepare the fields, and then people go out and play on the fields, you know, for casual play, and then mess up what's already been prepared for the next game. We're not opposed to casual play on the field, just not when it's prepared for a formally registered activity.
Any comments, some questions on that?
Makes sense, yeah.
My only comment would be, it's a management issue. Who's in charge of, you know, enforcing that? Just a rhetorical question.
Again, we're not at the point that we have, you know, a part-time staff of people who are out of the park, perhaps one day we will. But in the meantime, what we're able to do is do what we can without being disrespectful to the public. So if you put signs out there, we, as we tried it a couple times, we've tried it for the last two weeks, to see what feedback we've gotten. We have had a couple citizens who've made the comment that my cat just paved this park, and you can't tell me when I can get on it and when I can't get on it. You know, it's unfortunate. But, you know, if we're gonna start doing this on a regular basis, we wanted you to be aware we're doing this, so if people call you, you understand, and hopefully you're in support of what we're trying to do.
I think this, you know, by stating that, just like with the tobacco, it just, it sets the expectations, and it lets people know, you're right, we may not have somebody to enforce it 24 hours a day and be out there, but if somebody is out there playing on it when they shouldn't be, and you or somebody else, you know, an official, tells them they need to leave, they, you know, they should be aware of it.
Okay. All good? Thank you.
All right, let me go back to that just a second, Jim. I'm just a little hesitant about that, just because I want to know the degree at which we're thinking someone is messing up a field when they get up there. What is the standard of what someone's doing that's creating a challenge for those that are reserving the space?
When we're playing an organized game, baseball game, the issue really is on the baseball field, and not so much on the larger turf, multiple courses.
Are we just talking the dirt between the bases?
The dirt, and then the lines and bases.
Okay.
We have specialized equipment to smooth out the dirt, to give it a crisp, clean appearance. We have equipment to line the fields, so that when people come up, the park looks well-prepared and cleaned up. At the end of the day, you know, the kids running up and down the lines, they all get messed up, and that's why we have to scrape the field and dirt, and we rely on it. But we'd like to avoid the situation where we are preparing the fields, and then people are freely coming on, messing up, so that the work has to be done again before we start the game.
How late in the day would we prepare our field before it's being done, before the game is in play the next day?
Typically, the fields are being prepared on a weekday, they're being prepared in the late mornings, early afternoon. We also try to prepare them on Friday night, if we have very early games, because the games are not quite so early, we prepare them second morning.
Okay. And on the weekdays, they, late afternoon, but that would be for the following morning or for that evening?
For that evening.
That evening, okay. So, yeah, I just, the longer that delay would be, I think that would make it more difficult, but if it's close to it, or at least, you know, at least at a period when the park is closed, that's fine. I would, I wouldn't like to see, I mean, is it more than two hours before a game when a field is prepared, other than when the park is closed?
On a weekday, it could be. It depends on the load of work that's done that day, how that day would be working schedule.
Okay. What's the maximum amount of time that would be between a field preparation versus when the play would actually happen?
Prepare the fields at 11 o'clock, or play at 5:00 o'clock that day, and we're talking weekday.
Six hours.
Yeah, we're talking weekday, typically, these days when the kids are in school.
Right, right. I'm not too concerned about, I just want to make sure we know what we're doing, so let's manage that and see how it goes.
I was just gonna add, the other key issue, and that is weather-related, too, right? But we wanted to be able to make sure the fields are closed when they're too wet to be on.
Right. That makes sense.
Thank you, Carl, glad to have you, and I guess, that's another issue, and we've had situations where the weather, the fields are too wet to play on, but people decide they still have a plan, it's locked around the mud, and they put large holes in the mud, and it makes the re-preparation of the dirt much harder.
Sure.
That type of closure could be, could be days.
Yeah, yeah.
Depending on how much rain we had.
I can understand that.
Bill?
I think my greater concern, Jim, is on the artificial surfaces and protecting them insofar as vandalism is concerned. I've heard horror stories about some of these surfaces that have been vandalized, talking big bucks. If you can't repair them, you have to replace them, so. Do we have closed-circuit TV up there or not? What's, has that been discussed, or don't you see...
We haven't had a need to do so with the, in terms of vandalism. I think if we start developing that type of problem, we might consider that, but the best thing that we have right now is working in close relationship with the police department. Scott and I were just talking today about, why don't we go ahead and start closing down parking lots on weekends, they've offered to talk to us about that, and we're all doing. And that's the kind of cohesiveness of working together, that simple solutions can help save a lot of problems. But in all candidness, we've put up bollards to stop vehicles driving in the park. I've had experience of people who got a pickup truck and drove around the trail, so we put up bollards at another entrance to the trail. We've had cars drive, before the bollards, cars drive out to the field late at night, and they do hamster ball racing in fields, using the headlights of their cars. The bollards will stop the vehicles, but you can't stop the people, so it's a kind of a reduced interest in their vehicle.
Okay, Rick.
Jim, what time do we, do we lock the park up? I know we've got the gates, are we locking it every night and then opening it in the morning? Are we doing that with our parks?
We are not yet, but we are talking about that right now, as we speak.
Okay. Because I think that, from looking at the vehicle, I know what you said, by putting the bollards up, you restrict, but I think the more you keep people, I know North Park and some of the other Alpharetta parks, they lock the gates at night, so you can't get a vehicle. You could walk in there and walk around the trails, but you can't actually get into the park with a vehicle.
Well, like I said, Scott and I were just talking about this, and Karen was especially among Chief Krokoff and all, and there's a willingness to do so, we've got the mechanisms to do so now with the gates that we have in place, so I see us doing this very, very soon.
All right. Please, Jim, move on.
Thank you. Okay. UAV or drone usage. UAV means unmanned aerial vehicle. We first started talking about this a year ago, and we have been carefully watching the impact drones are having in parks and in communities all around. We have several documented situations that were high-profile, drones have crashed, I believe there's one at the Tennis Open and some others. There's also documented events at some Little League parks in California, where there was a dad had a drone trying to watch the other team's pitcher. So the dad of the pitcher got his drone out and was studying all the hitters, and ultimately they got into position war, and finally they collided, fell on the ground and hit him.
Dog fight.
I apologize if I didn't say that. We also understand that, you know, drones can be quite entertaining, quite useful, very useful tool, the city owns a drone. We've recommended that the city establish a policy, rather than an ordinance, that start with a policy that drones are not permitted at parks with active fields, which today consists of Bell Memorial Park, but that they would be approved for usage at passive parks, such as Broadwell Pavilion, the Birmingham Park, Providence, once it comes online, they'll then challenge one there. But in other words, where we have organized activities with large groups of people, not a good idea to have a drone. So this is where we'd like to get feedback.
Okay. Karen?
Is it possible to put in there that they would be allowed with a special permit? Because you might have a, some kind of major tournament there where they need to have drones for their publicity or whatever, just so that, you know, saying it's not allowed there without a permit, and have a permit process so that you make sure the person operating the drone is not somebody that's going out there trying it.
I'm not opposed to that, I don't...
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I was at a, at a event at Milton High School the other, the other day, and they actually videoed it, you know, did all that, so, but that's a good idea.
I would agree.
I have one good idea. I'll go home now.
Okay. You guys have too many in there.
All right. Any other? Advertising and team banners.
Okay, advertising and team banners. We do get some requests from organizations that want to be able to promote their activities. It's fair, you saw this past weekend with the Atlanta Cricket League, they had a banner for their, you know, for to promote that their event that they had. And banners essentially come two ways, either it's a straight advertising banner, in which an organization pays a fee, to the team banners that could be listed just for players or listed players and not teams' sponsors. And there are some communities that don't allow any banners, there are some communities that allow banners all we want, with some type of regulation on it. The Parks and Rec Board recommended that we consider the approval of banners on fencing, leachers, and any court entrance for the day of the event only. The idea being to preserve the look of the city. I, on your next page, you will see, we took a picture, this is a banner from Pat's Call Wash, which was a sponsor at the Hopeful Youth Association a couple years ago, where the old park was torn down. It happened to be saved, so we put it up for the purpose of giving a picture of a banner on a fence. I have some other pictures of other representations in other parks of how it can be, we have pictures I can pass on to you that shows banner, if you're banner of a row, or a court, others that just show team programs, I can pass them along just to give ideas of how banners are used in parks. And I guess the question is, what do you folks want to do with regard to any banners? There are programs that would definitely benefit, either individual teams, such as travel teams, or all-star teams, football program, others that would benefit from being a raise money for activities. But the question is, and we've just got $10 million, what would you like to do? So I'm gonna bring this up here just to show you some other examples.
Stacy, you're doing a great job as part of the... Stacy, you're doing a great job as part of the community.
I don't have a problem on the day of the event, but I believe that. And if your event is Friday night to Saturday night, I mean, I guess you can leave them up over Friday night, but they need to be down within a certain amount of time after the event's open.
Well, I guess that would be the question, you know, talking about, you know, banners that would be there for the season and, you know, people would pay money. Or are you just talking about per, per the banner? What's your thoughts on that?
You asking for the Parks Board opinion or you asking for my opinion?
Well, you know, I mean, what's typical? And I know a lot of times, you know, businesses in the past would pay three, four, five hundred dollars for one to go to the, you know, for the facility or the teams or whatever and they'd expect it to be there for the, the season.
Well, the Parks Board certainly has given their opinion that they would be comfortable with the banners for the day of the event. And I certainly expanded to say, you know, for the weekend of the event, I don't see an issue with that. And we could require that those banners be taken down within 24 hours and if they're not, we have staff that can take them down and, you know, put them aside. Speaking as a guy who's been doing this for 20-plus years, I don't, this is my opinion, I don't want to see Bell Park filled up with banners that go across the field and stay there for a long period of time. We've spent 10 million dollars on a phenomenally beautiful park. And that doesn't mean that there aren't banners that can be done and be very tasteful, certainly are. But over time, they get aged, they get weathered, it starts to look bad. Okay? There are people who will tell you that in a traditional baseball park, you know, the banners are part of that community. I understand that. So I accept I might be speaking against that line of thinking. But I think we have more than a baseball park. We have more than that park. We've got nature trails, we've got playgrounds, we've got other things and we want this, I don't want people to look across the field and see a banner. I'd like to look across the field and see nature. But that's my opinion.
Well, that's something that, you know, with the high school, what they'll do is, you know, they put them out before the game and take them back, you know, after the game. So that's, yeah.
The first question I have too, I know that, and obviously I coach at AYFA and they have their season banner that they have on the back of their bleachers every year. Are those there the entire year? Do they take those down every Saturday after the games? I don't remember. I'm just asking.
I personally checked with the city of Alpharetta and their rules and regulations are that at Will's Park and Wentbridge, there are no banners allowed, period. At North Park, it's supported AYFA only. They're allowed to put up banners the day of the event. There are people who will affirm to you that, yeah, you come back on Monday, the banners are still there. So that's an issue of managing with the relationship with the organization that is supposed to take them out. In my mind, it's in the same category of trying to get our program partners to remember to put away the scoreboard controllers and turn off the lights.
Sure.
You know, there is, for the most part, Alpharetta has had success with doing a game only at North Park. There are other organizations that, again, they believe that you put the banners up illegal.
I would agree with Karen and Joe, the, we don't want to have them up there all the time, just sitting up there in my mind. I think that we, though, do need to allow them for the ability for the organizations to raise money and advertise and things like that. I think that for sponsorships, I think that would be good. One thing I, I've also thought too, and I love the Parks Board, would be to decide on the placement of the signs, you know, where they, where they ought to go on, on the fences and things like that. Maybe where we have, like, the zones that would be allowed, zones that are not allowed, and maybe height restrictions of the signs, things like that.
Overall size restrictions of the signs, I think.
Well, overall size restrictions. But I'm also thinking like too, here, I'd love to see these lower than right here, than an eye. So, you know, on these, you get it out. When they have them high like that, I understand why that is, but it's just.
Would you compare, for example, please, to the picture of the Cactus Call Wash sign?
Yeah, I mean, just as an example, obviously I don't know the measurements of the fences in and of themselves, but we want to make sure that as there's people from the outside looking into the park, we want them to look in and see the kids play. I don't want signs blocking views of people playing, per se. If there's a way that we can create a policy or a direction to allow signs to be in certain zones where it doesn't block that view or where it has, where they're allowed, but just managed properly and in the proper places. So maybe we should go take them over to the, to Bell Memorial and just look to see where would be a good place to put these things.
I'll tell you where the most popular place is to put them is up the back of the dugouts. And that typically does not interfere with you of, you know, watching the game. And then other places, which tends to be an outfield, we are hanging them off of the bleachers. And again, people are sitting in front of them, that is, you see it as their approach.
Right, right.
But you don't want people, if you, people putting them up on the back of the dugouts, you want to make sure they're not, putting them up with something that's hard to remove or putting holes in the back of the dugout or, you know.
Well, no, typical what most folks do with new banners these days is they use zip ties to the chain or these carabiners. And we can specify that.
Seems to me, Jim, where this whole discussion is leading to the obvious thing is having a full-time patrolman out there, monitor, park manager, whatever title you want to put on it. What's your thoughts on that?
I can see one day we're gonna need some more help running the park or regular staff running the park. But, right, this is our first year of you of running Bell Park and we're doing a lot of learning as we're going. And we're trying to maximize the relationships we have with our organization of Optentech Triscapes as well as our program partners. I can't predict the future, but right now, I'm working within the parameters we have, the budget and the partners who are working to do the best we can. The banners have to be, you know, best worth in the opinion of the athletic officials, staff and others, that we need to come up with a different solution to build them back in program.
Okay. Rick?
I guess along the same line, maybe you have, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board comes up with the general guidelines of how you would handle the banners, where they would go, and then just see how it goes and kind of see, like you said, see what happens. See if you've got the right mix starting out before you make it too restrictive or, or too wide open, and then just see where you need to change.
Well, the nice thing about, I, I agree with you, Rick, thank you. The nice thing about doing this as a policy compared to ordinance right now is if the policy doesn't work, we can change that pretty easily. We can be very fluid.
And to your point, it's the first year, you know, if you go with your recommendations first year and see how it goes, maybe change the policy or do that.
So I took that work and some size limits and indication where signs can be placed and specify how they can be mounted. Okay?
Okay.
Next, we want to talk about LSVs, which are known as low-speed vehicles, otherwise known as hoverboards. The city already has an ordinance against motor vehicles in all parks. It shall be lawful for persons to drive, operate or park any motor vehicle, mini bike or motorcycle within any city park except in areas designated of use. As much as we're having a bit of an issue that started to develop with the hoverboards, Parks Board recommends we make no changes at this time. There's a general belief that first of all, they are a vehicle that has a law, they are considered low-speed vehicles. And we're actually of the opinion that they may well be a fad because they have a notorious safety record. This happened this past Saturday. I witnessed it at North Park. Hoverboard overheated, went on fire, and then went through a series of explosions as the batteries in the footpad blew up. Out for a fireplug, came by and put them out. We had to clear the fields, a little smoke, and it was, I agree with the Parks Board. We have a feeling that these things might not be around in a couple of years and don't think we need to do it, change or rule. It's a low-speed vehicle, it's got a motor, and they're already, the board says shouldn't be there. We have had issues of people driving their low-speed vehicles, doing hoverboards around the park as well as driving them onto the fields. And I certainly don't want something to go on fire going onto your official turf roads.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
All right. Next one. This is one that council back in November asked us to take a look at again and we spent several months visiting and revisiting it. And that is the field and facility rental policy. And the current policy is that a request for a program or athletic sport already offered by the city or its partners will not be considered. And for much consideration, the Parks Board still maintains that if we establish a partnership with one of our program providers, it's not good, not good business practice to try and bring in people that would contribute against them.
Okay.
Any comments on that?
Are we trying to bring people in or are we just allowing people to rent the field space if they want it?
We're certainly not trying to bring people in, but this is in the rental policy. This is for people who want to come in and start some programming identical to what is being offered by our program partners or what is it.
So this is more with competing vendors versus if someone came in and said, hey, we want to do this unique sport or whatever, like we had with the recent tournament?
Yes. For example, at Atlantic Cricket, we don't offer, we don't have a cricket program around the Cricket Corner. We love them over in ours. But we already have, I'll use baseball as an example, we already have the Recreation Baseball League and we have an established tier of six age groups of advanced level, it's called travel baseball. Typically what happens is you'll have a dad whose child didn't make a travel team and recruit a bunch of kids. And then they come to us and say, we're all Milton residents and we want to rent the, the field space and we want to run our own travel program. One of the advantages of working with our partners is we vet them, we're able to verify that their coaches are, you know, safe beyond the children. We make sure that they have insurance, we have a measure of control over their program. So much is renting and bypassing the whole process. We would have no way of verifying who's out there working these kids, do they have insurance and things like that. We could probably push the insurance issue to make sure they got it, but it's more than just identifying and saying it's keeping the children safe. And it's working with our partners. That's why we call them partners, not just vendors.
Yeah, I just, I just don't feel good about that. The, and I can't, I mean, you know, if someone comes in and wants to rent a baseball field for whatever time, what's the distinguishing factor of us being able to approve or deny that? If they want to have a...
For a one-off activity, the policy as is does give me the latitude to approve this type situation. You know, for a one-off situation, you know, I'm, we can certainly accommodate that. But what we're trying to prevent is the person is trying to circumvent a, circumvent the rules that we're establishing, we're establishing safe programs here. A one-off, hey, I want to put together a baseball game, it's my kid's high school graduation and I want to get all those kids, all the buddies together to play a game. All right, that's fine, we can do that. I want to come in and start an annual travel program. Different story.
Well, I agree because if it's something that they're doing on a regular basis, the perception is that it's a city-sponsored program and if the coaches haven't been vetted by the city, you know, we could end up with some liability there. So it just makes sense that if it's a, you know, once in a while thing, that's no problem, but if it's an ongoing program, then it needs to go through our proper procedures.
We work for a park to make the fields as available, we can't replant organized activity as long as we're rented by citizens, residents and non-residents. These fields are very popular as are Bravo Pavilion and Bethel Center. We're just trying to make sure that we don't have someone who's going around the rules to create them.
Makes sense. Okay. Anybody else?
My thoughts on that is a little bit different. I'm just gonna put some devil advocate, devil's advocate out there as well, and we talked about this before, but I just want to, my, my only thought and concern, and I understand that people might say it's a city function program, but again, if anybody is a taxpayer wants to rent her field space, they should be allowed to rent it. I think though, there should be, granted, I don't want someone reserving field space for six months out for a league program, and I agree with you on that. But if they want to say, you know, I want to try to put three games together and, and if they say I want to sponsor for whatever reason, maybe they have the Bad News Bears out there that are just a bunch of kids ready to play, or he thinks in his own mind that there's some elite team or whatever. Our viewpoint of whatever it is he's doing though, we have to be very careful about determining intent for field space for someone else. And if we are making that determination of intent by someone when all he's doing is renting field space, whether he's competing against an organization or not, he's still a resident renting field space to a policy that he has every right to as much as anybody else. And I just have a problem with our deciding that someone can't do it because of perception of intent. To my mind, that perception can vary between what you think it is, what he thinks it is, it becomes very subjective. And I, I worry about us on that and about making that determination based on something. And I, I get it, we want our kids to be safe et cetera, but if some kid or parent decides that a kid is, we'll use baseball as an example, wants to, you know, decides hopeful baseball isn't doing it for them, then, you know, and that they want to take a risk going to another organization that doesn't have the qualifications, doesn't have the, the expertise or the coaches' things, but they're taking that risk on their own kid's perspective, I don't think that necessarily holds the city liable. I think that, that is their own choice. And you have a Milton resident deciding to rent field space according to her rules as much as anybody else. And that coach or whatever thinks that he's doing, he may think he has an elite program, it could be the Bad News Bears for all we know, you know? But I think when we're judging someone's intent on field space, it should be available to anybody. That is a very fine line that I'm just not comfortable with. You know, but I'm one of seven up here, so.
What do you do in a situation that it's a Milton resident that's putting it together, but everybody on the team happens to be non-Milton residents, they're Forsyth County residents and they're doing it this team to avoid the non-resident fees within the city of Milton?
Well, he should, anybody who wants to apply for a field space and we get the rental field, field for that, if someone else gets it beforehand, then that's his risk. But either way, we collect revenue for field space being used.
How do you, Jim, you hit on it earlier, in a one-off situation, if it's a special event or a tournament or a couple of games or whatever, I mean, I could see that working in there somehow. Now, I also see the point, you, you know, if you're gonna allow somebody just to form their own teams or whatever and rent field space for the whole season, it's just gonna be a hodgepodge and that wouldn't work. It's not, not fair to the partners and the city programs because they've got it all scheduled out. So, you know, I see Matt's point, you don't want to exclude folks or citizens, but also think you need to rein it in to be a special event or a one-off kind of occasion.
I, I think it'd be better managing the process of renting field space and not by intent, but by time, you know, maybe you can't rent more than a month or, or 60 days out, as I thought, or 45 days out. I don't know what the policy is now. I don't want someone renting field space for every single weekend for nine months from now. That just doesn't seem to make sense. But if they know that they've got, at this time, they can call in and rent field space, then they should have that right to do that. But if we're, you know, if we're just letting people rent field space for three years from now, there's got to be some kind of limitation about what can be done. If you manage that process, I think that that adds the risk to anybody doing what you're worried about, which may not make it feasible and it may just let it die on its own accord. But I don't like us trying to judge someone's intent by what they're doing. But I don't like us trying to judge someone's intent by what they're doing. It just, that just makes me really nervous on that end.
I think you've got to be careful too because especially with the baseball fields, you don't know, you could end up with a week of rain and time that you thought baseball fields were going to be wide open, suddenly you needed them for your city programs.
Right. Well, to your point on the time, and, you know, would it be better to, not only time but limit the number of occasions where somebody's, you know, within a calendar year, you're allowed to rent two times or something like that. I don't know, I'm just throwing that there. I don't want to get it too complicated because you've got a professional program and this could open up Pandora's box here too.
I would agree, I was thinking three instead of two. And, you know, if it becomes more than that, then we're talking about a situation where we should look at the programming if it is, and manage it that way. But two times a year, three times a year, I'm right there with you on that.
Maybe that's something, Jim, you guys can go back to the board and you guys can talk about it and see, you know.
But as you just said, we're not actively trying to get someone to compete against anybody. They're just coming to us.
Well, I think by limiting the number of times, you're at least sending the message that, you know, for the public, for the citizens, the park is available, but it's not available to set your own league up and that type of stuff to compete. But I'm going to suggest maybe, I think it's, I'm kind of here to mix things, but would everybody be okay with the board and Jim discussing, you know, one-off, you know, occasions where, you know, two, three times a year, three times a year, whatever, not an organization, but citizen could rent the field?
This is in a situation of a competing program or having a stop program. Again, it would not apply to cricket, like, yeah, the reasons and all that.
No, we're talking about...
And the best way to judge it is to ask the guest about it, the person, what do you want to do? Typically what happens is around the June, August timeframe is when we get the calls, I form my own travel team, we are the Milton Mustangs, and, you know, we are all Milton residents as well. And what you find is typically this is a dad who feels his kid needs to be playing higher level, maybe they kind of have the local teams and, you know, wants to create his own thing.
Milton issue.
Sure.
We call those Milton issues.
Yes, yes.
And generally, Jim, I got to tell you, I don't have a problem with that. I understand a dad may be doing a bad decision for his son or something, right?
I'm not saying he's making a bad decision for his son.
But that's the spirit of which, that's the spirit of which I'm hearing it come from because we don't want people, you've said that twice now, it's a dad that doesn't like that his son didn't make a travel team or something. If someone didn't make a travel team, wants to form his own team, that's not necessarily a bad thing, right? It just is what it is.
Well, I think by limiting the number, and again, goes back, can you guys discuss it and come up with something you feel comfortable with, come back to us. By limiting it to a couple of times or whatever, that's going to keep somebody from setting up their own league and using the facilities if it's competing. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, just make sure we have the process managed.
Okay. Rick?
And maybe this is something I direct to Steve, but what I'd like to see, or I don't know if it's easy to do down the road and we've got some history, is kind of look at what is our park's utilization? I mean, we're just starting out, I'd be interested, it's not going to be, I guess, relevant right now, but down the road, take a look back and see, well, how much space are our programs, active programs, basically, the field during normal hours are being used, fully utilized? That's something, I guess, looking to the future, I'd be interested in seeing what our park's utilization is. And how much of it is rental, available for rental versus programs that we've got?
Actually, on a side note, not to get tangential, we're working on a software tool called RecOne, which was initially purchased as a purpose of allowing online scheduling, excuse, online registration, that's a private purpose. But it's got this calendar function to it that Tom McElveen and I are exploring as to, this might give us some very useful tools, possibly get it as far as something that we can publish on the city website, so people can get online, hey, I want to see if there's any open, anything that can stay with such and such activity. So, we only kind of recently discovered that component of RecOne, so I don't have a full answer for you, but it looks encouraging, and that would then potentially do us some force of harm.
Okay. All right. Move on to fees.
Changes to fees. We've had one program provider perform a request of modification to the fee structure that's established in our city ordinances, specifically in the non-resident rate and the income contractor. The non-resident rate that is established right now with the city is that if you are not a resident of Milton and via the Alpharetta Agreement, not a resident of the city of Alpharetta, it's a 50% increase over the registration fee. And then on top of that, our commission structure, as it's written, is that after the discretion of the Parks and Recreation Manager, we can charge no less than 10% registration fee as a commission and no more than 30%. Parks and Recreation Board listened to a very compelling discussion from this organization this past Friday, we only had our April meeting, and what came out of that was some discussion that we should, we should take a look, possibly some modifications. We're not prepared to make a formal recommendation to it, but as long as it came out, it let me kind of get an early feel from you guys as to what you're thinking of this. One innovative practice I've seen is the out-of-city fee to stay at a full 50%, but then have a cap at a registration that would be $180, putting the out-of-city fee at a maximum of $90. We have a couple of programs, Milton Steelers Football is one of them, our Boys Across and Girls Across, the older kids programs, they're over that number, and so this could potentially be a little bit of financial relief. Now, the first question I think you personally asked me, Jim, what's the impact of that financial program? I don't have those numbers yet in front of me, this just came out of a discussion on Friday, and we're still collecting our spring registration, fall registration due to the latest Dr. Bell apartment, did he give us enough credit to be viable? And with that same discussion, the Parks and Recreation Board recommended that I take a look at the impact, if the commission fee is at 10% and at 20% as well as 30%. So, we're early in the discussion, I'd love for any thoughts, man. Obviously, this discussion was on the Parks and Recreation Board, but discussion I've had with Stacy for the finance and overall impact. But that's what came out of that discussion on the city, you know, that's right.
Okay.
I'd be okay with more exploration, yeah. Just getting to make sure the data is right and analyze that a little more clearly and nothing wrong with that.
Anybody else?
Please keep in mind that if we look at changing the out-of-city fee to have a cap, that would mean us coming back for ordinance change. If we look at reduction in commission fees, that is already committed within the ordinance, and it's going to be, I get to go ahead from ever other consideration.
I think it was important to look too at what our Milton residents are paying that are participating in Forsyth County and Roswell and things like that, what kind of out-of-city fees are they paying? And it's, you know...
It's, I haven't so much done research comparing this against Forsyth County and Cherokee County, county structures with Parks and Recreation is different in cities. But Alpharetta has a 75% out-of-city fee and every other community has a 50% out-of-city fee. Alpharetta does have a cap on theirs. They cap theirs at $112.50.
Nice even amount.
Yes, it's a nice round figure. The O at the end is a round.
Yeah.
All right. Take out the coins. Okay.
Is there anything else I can add to that?
Everybody good with more exploration on it?
Yes, more exploration.
Okay.
All right, well, with that, I'd like to wrap up. Just two things I want to say. A week from this coming Thursday, on the 27th, is the Golden Games opener, and for the first time ever, it's at Bell Memorial Park. Joe, we're counting on you to win back that award that I lost last year, but do it well before. And so we're counting on you to, you know, get that mayor's cup back to the city of Milton. And so all of you folks can make it out there, we want to make this a pretty big event. First time city Milton's hosting it, and then before we close, happy birthday to Rick Martin.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Rick.
Let me, unfortunately, I have a, I'm going to be at a project meeting out of town on a Wednesday, 27th, so, you know, many council members can come, that would be good since it is in Milton.
We need a designated replacement for you, sir, for the...
Well, that's Mayor Proctor.
But I'll be in Texas.
So, I'll let, who else wants to volunteer?
I didn't do very good for us last year, so verify somebody else.
All right, so it's down to Bill and Rick.
I'll leave their chair, but I'll...
Rick, do you want to do it?
Let the rec. show, he almost pulled you down.
Well, I know, but I just couldn't keep up.
Do you have a senior involved in this? I'll volunteer.
You want to do it? Everybody good with Bill doing it?
I'm okay with a senior on board.
I'm fine.
Or we can all just make Bert or JoJo.
You know, you could.
Yeah.
All right. Well, Bill, but anyways, to my point, any other council members, please try to be there if they can to show support, it's exciting to have it in Milton.
All right, well, once again, Mayor Castell, thank you very much. Hopefully you see that your Parks and Recreation Board is active, they're engaged, they're working hard on things. I'm proud of working with a great group of people, thank you for following, bringing tourists in arms, whatever you have to do to get them involved. We've got a great group.
We appreciate, we appreciate all their help and time and effort and certainly is making a positive difference.
Obviously, we're throwing a lot at you guys and with all the people using Bell Memorial and everything else, you guys have done a great job. So I just wanted to say thank you for what I'm seeing too.
Thank you. And we definitely feel the support from you guys and feel the support from all fellow volunteers in the city. Wonderful experience. I think a long time in Bell Memorial Park, now that it's exceeding the dream check.
You bet.
Thanks to Sue and the rest of the board for what they did.
Exactly.
All right, Stacy, one more.
Okay, last item is a discussion on proposed revisions to impact fee ordinance. In Port, whenever you show my cat, Tosh Ross, there is one public comment.
Okay, we call a public comment.
It's from Jack Lyndon, he is not here, he had to leave, but he wanted something right up to the record. He is in support of this agenda item, and he said, we are asking the citizens of Milton to pass a $25 million green space bond. It will be hard to argue that the citizens should pay more taxes and at the same time give developers a break on their impact fees. In my view, all developments, all new developments, should pay the full impact of their new developments as was determined by the impact fee committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, good evening. Okay, back in October, October 5th, and I'm referring to the memo that I sent out, it was October 5th that we adopted the impact fee ordinance, and then it was October 6th that we actually started charging the fees. I have an area that was here, but when we, when we adopted the ordinance, we had a fee schedule attached, and the fee schedule that was adopted, that was adopted with ordinance, implemented at 100%, three of the categories that we charge impact fees for, that is the fire protection, law enforcement, and roads, but for the parks and rec fee, we implemented a 50% fee for that. Today, we're here to revisit, because at the time that it was adopted, we, you mentioned that we look at it at six months, and here we are. And I've prepared some options. Option one is the current charge of 50% for parks, with 100% for the others. And there's also a 75% charge for the parks and rec, that would increase it by 25%, and keep the others the same. Also, if you choose to go to 100%, it shows those numbers as well. The current total impact fee that is being charged right now for residential is $4,557.07. If we were to increase the impact fee for parks and rec to 75%, then the total would be $6,125.14. And if we went up to the 100%, it would be $7,757.85 for residential goods.
Okay.
Do we have any information that tells us how much we've collected thus far in impact fees?
Yes, we have information that I can get, the impact fee program that we have totals out, all of the residential permits that we collected. So, that number is 524,000 of collected building permits, what the fee would be. Now, folks have the option to pay the impact fee on time of COD and when they finish the construction and they come in. So, some of that number is still out, but that number shows how many residential...
So in six months, it's about a half a million dollars?
Yes, yes. Yes, we can get that.
That's not positive.
I think at the rate we're going now, it's, at the rate we're at now, which is lower, you know, it's about a million two a year, it would be double that, it could be up to double.
Yeah, I have some numbers, just averaging out, I have currently at the 50%, we average at about 25 residential building permits right now, so I just took that number, multiplied by the fee, which is $4,557. And then thus, and then if you did it per month, it would be $113,0926. Or if you did it for the year, if we went up to 12 months, it would be 1.3 million a year that we would collect. Now, if we went up to the 100%, we would be more than 1.86.
Okay. Bill?
At the risk of sounding uninformed or missing the point here, and I did have a minor in math, how do you get, could you run through the calculations again? You get 100%, 100%, 50% equals 100%.
Oh, okay. The, those numbers at the top correspond to 50% is for the parks, 100% is fire protection, 100% is law enforcement, and 100% for roads.
Remember, we originally kept it down to 50% on the parks, assuming we would ratchet it up at this point.
We did 100% for the others.
Yeah, but we had 100% for the other items.
100% of what?
100% of what the recommended fee was that we did for the impact fee study.
100% of that allotment for that, whether it's parks or fire or...
So when we did the impact fee study, all the fees were determined based on all of the plans that we have in place, the parks plans, all of the plans we have for roads, the plans for fire, and the plans for public safety. And so we figured what that would cost and how much we should charge a certain...
Should be 6, yeah, 6,200. So these are staying the same, but these are going up and...
So we established these numbers here.
That was a restatement originally, and talked about ratcheting out parks and rec later.
The real question is whether we want to go gradually or in full or stay the same.
Question I, you know, want to ask publicly, I know the answer, but have, you know, from staff, have we had any, you know, pushback or pros or cons?
Not that I have noticed. People come in, and I hear, because I sit close to the front desk, and people say, how much is it? And they write the check. Some, a couple people, and in the whole time we've been charging for past six months, we probably had two or three people ask, oh, what is the breakdown? And then they see that the parks charge is so much more than the rest of them, and they go, oh, why is that? But I'm sure if they just saw the number without the breakdown, they just wondered, I think, why was the parks so much more?
Well, I guess the question would be, you know, is council willing and ready to ratchet up as we had talked about, you know, contemplating later, or what's thoughts?
I'm okay with that, especially considering we just had a huge presentation on parks and rec needs and what we're doing, so.
I'm good, Rick.
Yeah, just so I understand this, then, when we put the ordinance in place, it was a set figure per residential unit, and that, if I read this, that would be $7,757.85. If we charged the full amount that we allowed by the ordinance, what I recall, we had the original discussion, we were ready to do that day one, but we said, you know what? Some developers are saying this is new to us, we haven't heard this, this is a negative impact, so we agreed as a council to give six months as a timeframe so people know they have full notice, this is what it's going to cost. And now I think, you know, what I'm hearing is, we're at this point, have you, have you done other surveys where you've actually heard input of what the residents want to see? I mean, we're looking at a green space bond, what type of input are you getting? Where are they saying they'd like to see improvements?
Yeah, we're getting information to decompress this plan, we had... Yeah, we're getting information to the comprehensive plan, we had some folks come in there, as well as surveys from the green space bond effort and so on, and we've heard a lot of people want trails, they want the trails put in.
So that would fall underneath the Parks and Rec, so we're seeing a greater request or requests by the community actually go that direction, as well as what we heard from our Parks and Rec director.
And I can, I was at the planning commission meeting when they were talking about the bond this past, what was that, earlier this week, and Kathy was there as well, and, yeah, the desire for us to spend money on green spaces is definitely there.
I guess I agree with what Joe and everybody else is saying, it sounds like if there's a definite desire and there's opportunity for people who are developing within Milton to contribute to that, I think I'm in favor. We've waited six months, I've got plenty of notice, so this is a normal ordinance.
And my only question is, do you go straight from 50 to 100% or do you go up to 75%? But you know what? They've had six months, if we'd gone up to 100% initially, we probably would have had an extra $400,000, if we really want to leave another $400,000 on the table, we'd just go ahead and say, "Hey, it is what it is".
And other municipalities are doing it also, so it's not new development, you know. Again, this allows the, you know, I don't believe this is going to curtail development a whole lot, but it allows development to pay for some of the infrastructure that's there.
How do, Mr. Mayor, how does this, how do we change this? Is this ordinance change, it goes through the normal cycle?
Yes.
We'll have to vote on the ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't have, it doesn't have to go through a series of hearings and all, it just has to be voted on.
First reading?
Yep.
Okay.
So we may not, you know, I haven't heard anything yet, but you know, you may have some feedback.
You may get the land of home buyers.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think they ever said, I think citizens all think it's good, they don't realize that they build a new house, it's going to be, you know, they're going to pay for it, but the existing citizens, it's fine, so they're not going to afford it. It's a, it's a fair, it's a fair thing. Okay.
So yes, so we'll prepare the amended ordinance.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, good. Go for it.
All right, I think we'll adjourn.